Good afternoon, welcome to our Committee of the Whole Agenda for Wednesday, February 19th, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order for our Committee of the Whole. Are there any declarations of interest from members of council? Go ahead, please, councillor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just an advisement to committee, 14 years ago, I declared an interest on file 19T-08002, which is Yorkwood Properties. As those lands abutted my property, those portions of the application have since been developed and been assumed by the municipality, so I no longer have an interest, but I just wanted to advise that I had considered as such. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are at item C, our land acknowledgement statement. The town of East Gwillingbury recognises and acknowledges the lands originally used and occupied by the First Peoples of the Williams Treaty First Nation and other Indigenous Peoples, and on behalf of council, I thank them for sharing this land. We also acknowledge the Chipewas of Georgina Island First Nation as East Gwillingbury's closest First Nation community, and recognise the unique relationship the Chipewas have with the lands and the waters of this territory. They are the water protectors and environmental stewards of these lands, and we join them in these responsibilities. We are at community announcements. I want to begin by extending thanks and appreciation to our incredible roads team for their hard work and dedication this past week. Addressing the incredible amount of snow we have received, they were really troopers out there, working around the clock to keep our roads and our sidewalks safe. And thank you to our wonderful communications and customer service teams for keeping our residents informed and responding to the many inquiries we receive. And I can tell you, we received a lot of inquiries. So those that weren't under my list are having worked that extra time, please let me share it with everyone once again. It has certainly been a challenging few days. Please know about all efforts. We're greatly appreciated. And I'm just wondering if there's any announcements from members of council. Councillor Foster, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Again, I will mention the Coldest Night of the Year Walk, which is this Saturday, which is the 22nd of February. We are currently sitting at $9,250, and that money will be in support of Blue Door Shelters. 2 o'clock that Saturday afternoon, we will leave for a walk from the trailhead at Young and Mount Albert Road, the No Kita Trail. I would like to say that we're going to walk the trail, but I think the deep snow might pose a bit of a problem, so we may have to strike out along the sidewalks of beautiful downtown Holland Landing. How's that? So again, that's this Saturday afternoon. Thank you.
And do you still have room for more?
Absolutely, and I believe the time for donations goes at least a couple of weeks after the event, so yeah, lots of time.
Please put me down.
I think I was texting back and forth last night, and that's it.
Perfect. That's great, thank you. You know you have a good walk when you're out with Terry. All good, thank you very much. Are there any other announcements from members of council? I'm not seeing any. I'm going to move to deputations, and our first deputation is M Osmond, on behalf of the Southlake Health Foundation, making a deputation to committee regarding the 2025 Nature's Emporium Run for Southlake. Welcome. Wonderful to have you with us today.
It is so great to be here. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and the councillors from East Gwillingbury for having us today. My name is Melanie, and I'm from the Southlake Health Foundation, and we would like to invite you to join us for the 2025 Nature's Emporium Run for Southlake. It is taking place on Sunday, April 27th. As always, the last Sunday of April, on our Davis Drive location, the 5K there. At Southlake Health Foundation, we fundraise with one goal in mind, supporting our leading-edge hospital and the communities it serves to make sure they have the tools and equipment they need to do their best work. As our community grows and changes, our hospital and our foundation fundraising goals grow too, always looking forward to ensuring that we are serving our current and future patients best. I am pleased to share, like I said, that the event is taking place on Sunday, April 27th. It's an amazing opportunity for yourself or a team to raise funds in gratitude for the care you or a loved one may have received at Southlake. It's a great way to support our amazing community hospital. Registration is already open at runforsouthlake.ca, and we already have over 375 registrants to date, and over 60 teams, including a few of our Mayor's Challenge teams already registered and ready to go. Can I get the next slide, please? So for over 100 years, Southlake Health has shown a passion to care for our communities and the citizens within. From our beginnings as a six-bed care home, Southlake has evolved to become a regional health system that provides leading-edge hospital services right in our own backyard and in local communities through a distributed health model. Southlake is building healthy communities through outstanding care, innovative partnerships, and amazing people. Given your expertise with your own constituencies as one of the fastest-growing communities in Ontario, you are all very acutely aware of the importance of access to great healthcare in a growing community. Each dollar raised helps us provide leading-edge care close to home. When you walk or run for Southlake, I will not be running it, I will be walking it, you are investing in a new way of delivering healthcare. You are fundraising to keep our patient care facilities up to date and to give our experts the tools that they need to deliver the best possible care for our communities. With the right space, tools, and people, we can take care of you, your loved ones, just minutes from home. Last year, the event raised $450,000, and this year, we are hoping to pass that $500,000 milestone. Next slide, please. In 2024, the Mayor's Challenge raised just over $56,000, and Team EG specifically raised just shy of $8,000, so congratulations and thank you. Last year, Team Aurora won for its sixth consecutive year, and I know Mayor Morakas is keen to hold it on yet again, but we are very excited to hopefully share that wealth and bring the trophy home to another municipality this year. We also have our second challenge, the Community Spirit Award, and it was awarded to the town of Newmarket last year, and we are pleased to bring this challenge back again and looking forward to see which municipality engages their community. So that challenge is awarded to the municipality with two-thirds of council registered and the largest turnout by percent of population from its residents. Next slide. So thank you for your time. We look forward to participating alongside you during this year's Nature's Emporium Run for Southlake. I know, looking along council here, I have seen many, many of you as team captains and many of you along the start and finish line for the past few years. I welcome any questions you have, and if you are interested, I would love to get a photo of you to demonstrate your support that we can promote on the Southlake Health Foundation's social media pages. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? I will let you know that, share with you that I am the team captain this year for our team, so we're getting ready to go.
Amazing, looking forward to it.
I'm not seeing any questions now. You wanted a picture now?
If we could, that would be great.
So we would just recess for five minutes and go out in the hall? Would you suggest that?
Committee could certainly do that. We can do a quick recess. I'm just going to confirm with communications if there is anybody available to take the picture. And I think I received confirmation, so perhaps if you'd like to call for a recess, we can do that briefly.
I have a motion for a recess, please. Thank you. All those in favor? And that's carried, and we'll take, let's see if we can do it in five minutes. Yes, I'm looking for a mover to receive the deputation. Councillor Crone, councillor. Just one, that's all I need. Thank you. All those in favor? And that's carried. We are now at item two, P Sprig, making a deputation to committee regarding CN Rail Train Whistles and Their Impact on East Gwillingbury Residents. Would you come forward at this time, please? Welcome, good to have you with us this afternoon.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council. I am here to talk about train whistles. So every day, we have about 20 trains traveling through our community, 80 whistles a day, 560 a week, 29,120 per year. That is one crossing. We have five, so looking at 145,600 train whistles a year, and that's being very conservative on the number. Name a company, an EG, that doesn't adhere to our bylaws, creates no jobs, gives nothing back to our community, biggest noise polluter, probably the biggest air polluter, and brings dangerous goods through our community every day. That company is CN Rail. CN Rail is a private company, but they're federally regulated. So in 2024, CN Rail's revenue is $17 billion. Their net income was $6,247 million. The CEO salary, $14 million. They have a capital expenditure of $3.4 billion for growth, which means that they're not looking in the rearview mirror to see the damage they're doing to the quality of life of our residents or the residents that travel, that have trains through their communities. They just don't care. But I know the town does, and they realise that it's not a blank cheque to have this problem solved. But what is the number that will get the town to fix the train whistles? That is the question. So what do we do? Do we go alone? We talk to other communities that have gone through this, get best practices, see how we can save some money? Do we confer with Canadian Transportation Agency? They're the ones that resolve disputes about the cost, and they also determine how much cost the municipalities pay and what CN pays. I know last year, CN came in and they gave you guys a presentation, probably worst-case scenario about the costs, because they don't want to pay any money. It affects their CEOs and their management's bonuses at the end of the year. So they come in, they present a fully loaded catalogue, but once they have to start paying some money, the options on that catalogue get stripped back. We'll be lucky to have power windows, so please don't ignore, or please don't take their cost projection as gospel. What if EG champions the cause, brings municipalities from across Ontario to come together against CN and the federal government to lobby for change? Municipalities against train whistles. We find strength in numbers, 20, 30, 40 municipalities that come together, and we send, hypothetically, we send CN and the federal government a letter, hey, we don't want you operating in our community anymore. This is reasons why. We will get noticed, and we will start to be able to open talks with them to get change. It's an election year, federal. So the question should be asked is why is the municipality paying for a private company to operate within the guidelines that you set out? Why do we have to pay for train upgrades at crossings? So if we change the regulations, why do we have to have four whistles? Why can't we just have one? Why does a train whistle have to be between 100 and 150 decibels? What about 50? Why can't the train whistles be attached to the crossing, pointing in the direction of the road, where you're alerting the vehicle traffic, rather than alerting me at 3:00 in the morning, three miles away? Chorno is a property tax, vacant home tax. Why can't EG have a business nuisance tax? A used tax to pay for the upgrades of the crossing, that CN doesn't seem to want to pay for? Or also even pay for the first responder salaries, the fire department, because of the dangerous goods that they bring through our community each day. I'm just here to get the conversation going. I know it's a tough, it's a tough road, and we've been here. There's someone from our community who's been talking to you guys for the last probably five or six years. All I'm asking is just to roll up your sleeves, let's try to find a solution. It's only going to get worse as trains are expanding, and they're looking at additional eight trains coming through our community within the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprig. Are there questions from members of council? Councillor Foster, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I wonder, we've had presentations on this before, we've all had lots of phone calls about the train whistles. I'm wondering if we could have staff give us a report to see if there have been any changes since the last time that we got information regarding this? I'm thinking it's probably over a year, year and a half ago, the last report that we, I could be wrong. I know that Metrolinks was working with the town and looking at level crossings, and I'd just like to know where that is. I think it's timely coming on the heels of a deputation like this.
Thank you. I'm not sure if staff have some answers right away, or we want to sit on them a little later. Mr. CAO, go ahead, please.
Madam Mayor, certainly, coming back with some updated perspective is not a problem. We can sort of look at what the last time was that staff reported on this matter and just assess whether, in fact, there's anything new to report or anything that's changed in that period of time that might be helpful. So at some point, we could come back with something like that, if that's what committee would like.
I'm seeing nodding, so I think we certainly don't expect anything here today, but if we could set perhaps a few weeks away to come back and have a discussion? Yes, go ahead, please.
Madam Mayor, can I just ask Mr. Mullinari, just what would be a reasonable time for staff to look at that and come back with something as an update? What would you recommend?
I would suggest probably sometime within the next two months. We'd need to do a little bit of research on when the last report was. We'd probably want to speak with Metrolinks again, and we'll come back with a full-time report.
Please.
So, Madam Mayor, I would say it'll likely be in early to mid Q2 that we would come back then with something on this matter.
Thank you. Councillor Foster, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to comment on a couple of the suggestions that Mr. Sprig made. Couple of things that I hadn't really thought about. Something as simple as lowering the decibels of the train whistles, I don't think we've heard that. The most interesting one, I thought, was the positioning of whistles on the crossings rather than the train. And if it senses the train coming, you get that blast towards the traffic that's coming. I don't know if anything like that is actually doable or not, but those types of suggestions maybe should be some of the questions that we're asking. So a couple of your suggestions, Mr. Sprig, if you wanted to forward them to myself or any one of us, we can certainly get it to staff, and if those questions are worth answering or asking, we can certainly go there.
Sorry, may I just say something? You're talking here about Metrolinks, but we also need to talk about CN. And I don't know if there's probably a different entity totally altogether, but probably under the same regulations. But I think we need to reach out to CN or on that side of it as well.
Thank you. Councillor Cruthers?
That was the exact comment I was going to make.
Any other questions or comments? Councillor Foster, would you like to make a motion to refer this matter back to staff for a report? Thank you. And a second or... Oh, I don't need one. Thank you. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming in today and spending your time. We know you've done a lot of homework in the meantime, and we appreciate that very much. So thank you for being here. We are at item F. There are no presentations. So I will move to item G, the administration with myself in the chair. And the first one we have is administration memo, town assessment of potential tariffs.
Madam Mayor, at the last meeting, committee was concerned about this as are municipalities and all levels of government across Canada. So I want to just ask Stephanie Cronfley, who's pulled together a cross-departmental team and put together this memo for you today, just to provide some very brief overview comments. Clearly, this is an evolving and emerging matter, and we'll continue to monitor it. But we've provided you with what we hope is some useful background information and some ideas on areas that we are looking at as we move forward. So if, with your permission, I'd ask Stephanie just to make a few comments.
Thank you. Welcome, Stephanie.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good afternoon, members of council. It's a pleasure to be before you today introducing this item, although I wish it was on a happier topic. As our CAO mentioned, at the last committee of the whole council meeting on February the 4th, council passed a motion directing or requesting that staff bring forward some information regarding the town's response to potential tariffs. And so in response to that direction, we were before you today with this memorandum, which provides a preliminary assessment of both the potential impacts of tariffs on the town, should they be imposed, as well as the, some of the current and potential future actions that the town may undertake in response. And this has been characterized as a preliminary or an early assessment, just given the fact that we are two weeks following the news that tariffs would be deferred for a 30-day period. And staff felt it was important to bring forward some preliminary information in advance of the expiration of that 30-day timeline, as well as in recognition of the fact that this is a rapidly evolving matter with developments emerging on a regular basis, to the point that between the time this memorandum was finalized and today, there have been a number of new notable updates and changes in the trade landscape. And so this memorandum captures input not only from the Office of the CAO, but also cross-departmentally incorporating some considerations from a financial and operational and procurement perspective, from an economic development perspective, and from a communications perspective. And the collaborative efforts to sort of scope this issue are not limited to internal staff collaboration, but in fact extend beyond internal discussions. The town has been working actively with its partners and its networks at the regional, provincial, and federal level to stay informed, to engage with other municipalities, to share information, to support advocacy efforts, and to work cooperatively to better understand the implications and available tools to support a coordinated response. So you will see some initial analysis that is EG-specific relative to the anticipated impact to town operations and the budget and the local economy, which are being explored, actively explored and investigated further. You'll see some initial actions that the town has proactively undertaken to support local businesses, to support advocacy efforts, and to engage with neighboring municipalities and organizations that are mobilizing. And you'll also see some potential options for, and considerations for actions that the town may contemplate taking should tariffs be imposed. And so just to say, ultimately, we are not working in isolation. And even though these potential tariffs are likely to have differential impacts to municipalities across the province and the country, whatever measures that the town takes with respect to procurement and communications and economic development and so on are likely to be strengthened if they're aligned and coordinated with efforts at the regional, provincial, and federal level. And so I hope that those general comments provide a bit of an overview, but happy to take any questions or refer your questions to the appropriate general manager to support.
Are there questions? Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to thank you first for being proactive in addressing this issue, which is timely for us as a municipality. And I wanted to ask, and somewhat making a comment, but I wanted to just confirm with staff that we don't want the public to have the wrong impression in the sense that when news of the tariffs came out and there were questions being asked in terms of how much business the municipality does with the United States, I didn't want the public to get the wrong impression that we're somehow, a lot of our business is with the United States or through procurement. So could you give the public a general idea, if it's even possible, about what sort of a percentage we might be talking about being affected by those tariffs in terms of, because my understanding is that we don't necessarily use a lot of American, you know, products. So maybe the CAO or someone could speak to that, because the feedback I was getting from the general public in terms of understanding was that they were concerned that we were somehow currently having a lot of not supporting Canadian businesses. And I want to assure them that that's not the case, right? So...
Madam Mayor, through you, first of all, I don't have a percentage, so I can't give you that. What I can tell you in broad strokes is that, being a service organization, the bulk of our costs are labor. So those are separate, we're not, there's no tariffs on labor costs, municipal labor costs. And in terms of procurement, it's hard to say whether there are components or elements. For example, if we're buying vehicles, whether there's some of those parts are coming out of the States or coming from Mexico or coming from other places. So I think it would be reasonable to assume that there is some of our costs that would be tied somehow back to American goods, but I would say it is limited. But I don't have a percentage to share with you. And certainly, as we move forward, if this continues to progress and escalate, we'll be looking a little more carefully at our specific procurement practices and determining if there's changes we need to make to even further zoom in on ensuring that we're aligning, as Stephanie indicated, with other levels of government across Canada to support the national efforts.
Thank you very much for that clarification. And I think that it's important that we get ahead of any potential misunderstandings with taxpayers. So, and I want to assure the taxpayers that staff and the municipality is doing everything possible to support local businesses as we move forward in these uncertain times. So, thank you.
Councillor Crone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to our presenter, Ms. Cronfley. This was an excellent report, and I like how you laid out all the support and future support that we'll be giving to our business community. That's phenomenal. Something I would throw back to staff to consider is even though the opportunities for procurement for American contracts or even, you know, components, that we try and figure out some sort of pain threshold, so that if we're, for example, if the Canadian part is, or product is 10% more than the American part, that that's a pain threshold we can live with. Or I would throw that out to you to do some discussion around that, because I'd like to see that fleshed out a bit, because I think there's an opportunity for us to say, yeah, we can, maybe we could buy it cheaper south of the border, but it's more important to buy Canadian, because I don't think this threat of tariffs is going away anytime soon. I think we're going to be harangued by it for the next two years at least. So any more thought around this would be appreciated. I really like what you put down in the report. Job well done. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Councillor Crone, would you move?
Happy to move.
Thank you. It resolved that the administration memorandum dated February 19th, 2025, entitled Town Assessment and Potential Tariffs Be Received. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Veltic, go ahead, please.
Madam Mayor, if it's all right with you, I just want to make one additional comment unrelated to the item that we just dealt with. I just wanted to build on the comment you made earlier about appreciation to our roads crews. I went, I had the opportunity two weekends ago to spend the better part of a morning, a Sunday morning, out with one of our roads operators ride-along and really got to see firsthand what they deal with, the great job they do, some of the challenges they face. And I really wanted to sort of echo your comments of commending our team. And I also wanted to extend that to our parks crew, because let's remember that it's our park staff that actually makes sure all our facilities, parking lots are cleared, deal with, you know, municipal trails and right-of-ways and that sort of thing. So between our roads team, pardon me, and our parks team, I think they've done just a super job and deserve lots of credit. And I just wanted to echo your comments from earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. And please, any opportunity, Mr. Veltic, if you could, when you're out with our staff, to remind them how concerned we are about what's going on out in our community and how pleased we are with the response of our staff. Thank you. That's second to none. Very good. Any other questions or comments at this time? We'll move along. I'm at Corporate Services with Councillor Cruthers in the chair.
Thank you very much. We have two items today on the agenda, the first one being the Corporate Services Memo on the Multi-Year Accessibility Plan 2024 Annual Status Report. And I'll turn that over to General Manager Gandhi to take us through.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in 2023, council endorsed the Multi-Year Accessibility Plan, which lays out how the town will be compliant with the Accessibility for Ontarians Disability Act, or AODA. Along with developing a plan, we're also required to prepare an annual report to council, and this memo here and the accompanying report meets that obligation. I'd like to acknowledge staff who contributed to the report and the Accessibility Advisory Committee of Council. I would also like to acknowledge Chris McPherson, who's been leading the effort for the past several years. And going forward, we've asked Shannon Janice Sapul to lead this effort. This is the individual who has been working with us in the capacity of EDI Engagement Coordinator, and to better reflect the position in the IDEA Action Plan, her position title is changed to Accessibility Indigenous and Equity Coordinator, so that better reflects her work. We have here today Delia Dumroth, Director of People and Belonging, to answer any questions, or I may be able to answer questions if you have some. And with that, I'll provide an opportunity for council to pose any questions on this report.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council? Seeing none, can I have someone move receipt? Councillor Leahy, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. The next Corporate Services Memo is on our Climate Adaptation Plan, Community Engagement. I'll turn that back to you, Ms. Goundy.
So the second item pertains to the Climate Adaptation Plan, which is underway and is related to the climate emergency that council declared in 2023. I'd like to acknowledge those who formed the working group, including staff from East Gwillingbury York Region, the Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority, plus members of the Environmental Advisory Committee. The memo before you outlines the milestones reached to date and is intended to brief council about important next steps where we will be seeking community feedback on the risk and vulnerability assessment. Chris Ross is here with us today. She's the manager of environmental initiatives, and she is happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. It's a great memo, seeing what we're doing. And I think since we've declared the climate emergency, we've seen different opportunities where we can reach out to the community and help with knowledge and understanding. And I just want to bring council's attention to, on page 31, there's the three workshop dates, February 26th, February 27th, and March the 6th. Do we have a time on, oh, sorry, there's a fourth one on March the 20th as well. Are they all at 6 o'clock? Yes, good. So hopefully we can attend at least one of those and get a lesson to what's happening with that. Is there any questions? Councillor Crone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Ms. Ross, thank you very much for preparing this and setting out to do some public consultation. I think that's always a good thing, if we can, public always, you know, loves to give their opinion, and I think that's a great to provide an opportunity. Can you tell me, these sessions that you have planned, do you need to be there at the beginning, or is it a drop-in? You can come in at any time throughout the session?
Through you, Madam Chair. It is ideal that people get there at the beginning, because we will start the workshop with an explanation of what brought us here and what is expected from them in the workshop.
That's a good question. Councillor Roy DeClemente?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, there's a longstanding resolution of council requesting that public engagement have consideration for the dinner hour. And I believe we've asked that these sorts of events, if they're not drop-ins, that they begin at 7:00. And I don't remember what that, when that resolution was passed, but given that we have a lot of people who commute from other places, 6:00 PM is often a challenge for people to get to an evening event. So I'm just raising that to make sure that we're in alignment with our intentions.
Thank you. I would agree with that. I'm wondering if, since we have three that are open to the public, the fourth one is for marginalized communities, I'm wondering if maybe we could stagger the start time. So for some people, 6 o'clock works better, because they've got to get to events that start at later. So I'm wondering if we could just give you that piece of feedback to maybe look at different start times.
I will. Thank you very much for that feedback. I will work with communications to arrange that time.
Wonderful. Thank you. And there will be a communication plan to make sure that everyone knows about this?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other comments or feedback? Seeing none, can I have someone move receipt of the Climate Adaptation Community Engagement Plan? Councillor Roy DeClemente, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. If there's nothing else, we will turn, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And I will move to Councillor Johns in the chair for finance.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. We just have one item on the agenda, and it deals with, it's an annual report that, for receipt, that speaks to our job tenders that are over 100,000 from that calendar year of January 1st to December 31st of 2024. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Marshall to speak to it.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. You're correct. This is a report that we provide annually. The procurement bylaw allows staff to award tenders up to $1 million to the lowest compliant bid. And any of those bids that are over $100,000, we have to report back annually on. This is our report- This is our report for 2024. And in 2024-15, contracts were awarded totaling $3.5 million, and they all followed the procurement bylaw process. Our manager of procurement's here and our GMs are here as well if you have any specific questions on any of the tenders.
Just a big shout out, we had a wave for our manager of procurement. He's in the back there with a big smile and a big wave. Good stuff. Any, any questions from our committee for Mr. Marshall? Yes, Councilor Crowthers.
Just a quick comment, looking down the list and seeing that almost every single one is well within budget, I wanted to say that it's much appreciated by council to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a great comment. Any other members of the committee wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'm looking for a mover to receive it. Councilor Leahy, thank you. All those in favor? Motion carries. Mr. Marshall, do you have any other items under finance?
Through you, Mr. Chair, nothing at this time.
Great. And any members of the committee, any questions regarding finance? Wonderful. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're at Item J, Parks, Recreation and Culture, with Councilor Crown in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items on the agenda today. The first one is Parks and Recreation and Culture Report, Health and Active Living Plaza Fitness Services Update. Could I have a mover for this first of all, before we, Councilor Roy DiClemente? Okay, over to you, Mr. Carmison. Could you walk us through this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The report prepared for council provides the terms of reference for potential agreement with a fitness service provider, the anticipated Health and Active Living Plaza. The intent of the service provision contract is to expand and enhance fitness services for our residents, to decrease or eliminate any potential operating or capital costs as well as provide ancillary revenue to help offset operating costs even further. I should also highlight that the Run-Walk Track will still have public access and access by way of drop-in and pay per use. The potential fitness service provider is a local area resident and a successful business owner with a desire to expand their services within East Columbary. Be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Carmison. Are there any questions from committee? Councilor Johns.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that, like, really two comments on this. One, I, we just finished talking about supporting local and I think that the fact that the owner operator is local, that's incredible. I also love the business model. And the fact is, is that we as municipality are not, not taking all of this on ourselves and the fact that outsourcing it with the, the guaranteed revenue on that, that lease, I think it's a responsible decision for staff to have gone in this direction and I, I think it provides clarity for everyone too. And yeah, I just, I just see wins in this item that we're speaking to. I just see a bunch of wins when looking, looking through the report. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great comment. Councilor Foster, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, just a comment, I think that reading this report and reading between the lines, it seems to me that Joe Persicini had his fingers all over this one, which is good. And I'd just like to thank him for lending his expertise in the field to, to us as, as we work through this. It seems like it came together nicely.
Thank you. Great comment. Are there any other thoughts? Councilor Roy DiClemente?
I just wanted to add, it, it wasn't necessarily included in, in the material before us, but this particular business owner has, has won awards from our, our Chamber of Commerce in the past. And so I'm delighted to see, to see his success and to be a part of his, his continued growth. So I appreciate the efforts that Mr. Persicini and Mr. Carmison and, and the team have put together. Thank you.
Great comments. Any, any other feedback, questions? I think, Mr. Carmison, from my own perspective, this, I, to reiterate some of what's already been said, but this is a great public-private partnership. I, I always get a little twitchy when government starts competing with the private sector, and you found a nice way to bridge that. I like that this is another source of revenue for the town, which I've been harping on about, and so that's a good thing. And the, the, the successful candidate here is footing the bill for the equipment. So that's a nice cost avoidance for us. So well done. I think you hit it out of the park on this one. Unless there's any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I, I believe we do have Joe on the line as well. He, he wanted to just say hello.
This is like a Johnny Carson walk-on. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, all. Madam Mayor and members of council. After many, many months of searching the right person and to own and run the fitness center for the Health and Living Plaza, Craig was the one that we chose. He's run a great business and he worked for me for many, many years, and I think it's the right fit and I'm looking forward to, and thanks for all the support from Aaron that worked with me very closely. And so we went, you know, like, looking at all the different spots, and we, we had, we had this guy, Greg, and I can vouch for him, and I hope he doesn't let me down because I'm going to be there. Thank you so much for my comments. I'm, I'm here down at Tootsie Cones, a little bit too hot for me, so I'm not dressed appropriate. So have a good council meeting. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. It's, it's, it's like old times having you back here on the, on the team's meeting. Thank you very much for all that you've done. Unless there's any other questions or comments, I'll, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Well done. Thank you very much. Okay, the second item on the, the agenda is Parks and Recreation Culture Memo, Seniors' Active Living Center Program Expansion. I think we have some other good news. Over to you, Mr. Carmison. Oh, can I have a mover for this, please? Councilor Leahy. Take, take us through this, Mr. Carmison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The memo prepared for council provides an update on an award of a provincial grant to support recreation services for seniors. The initial grant supports programs for seniors within each of our communities. In the future years of the grant, it will support expansion of additional programs, including our Health and Active Living Plaza. Be happy to answer any questions related to the grant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carmison. Are there any questions from committee? Councilor Crowthers.
Thank you. You mentioned the 55 and Up Club. I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity for other seniors' clubs in town such as Golden Anchor to be part of this.
Mr. Carmison?
Through you, Mr. Chair, absolutely. It's in our, our intent to support seniors' programming in each community. So the 55 and Up Club, the Golden Anchor, and the Friendship Circle in Mount Albert as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Mr. Carmison, do you have anything else you'd like to share with committee?
Through you, Mr. Chair, nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Committee members have anything else for Mr. Carmison? Seeing none, I will have the chair back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're at Item K, Development Services, with Councilor Roy DiClemente in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a relatively heavy agenda. We have five items on our agenda for this afternoon. The first one being Development Services Planning Branch Report, DS 2025-02, which is a zoning bylaw amendment application made by groundswell urban planners with respect to 22314 McCowen Road. May I have a mover, please? Moved by Mayor Haxson. Ms. Bijang, would you care to start us off here?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask our manager of planning, Victoria Moore, to provide some context and introduction. As this file, as council is aware, has been complex and there's been some evolving legislative changes in the interim, so Ms. Moore can speak to all of that that supports the recommendation.
You must have a thick file, Ms. Moore.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Just want to provide a little bit of an overview of what's happened since this was last before Committee of the Whole in September of 2023, where there was a report before you recommending refusal of the application. This report was deferred by committee at the request of the applicant to provide them with some additional time to work with staff to address the environmental policy concerns that were raised in the report. So since 2023, the applicant and their ecologist have been working with town staff and our peer review natural heritage consultant in an effort to address the town's ecological and policy concerns and to bring the application into conformity with the town's official plan and provincial policy. So the applicant went back and forth a few times with the town's peer review consultant to address their technical concerns raised in the initial review. This also included a site visit with both the applicant's ecologist and the town's peer, peer review ecologist. So one of the major changes to the proposal since 2023, in addition to addressing the technical natural heritage comments, was the introduction of a tree compensation plan proposing a two-to-one replacement of trees in another location on the property. So this would have the effect of providing a new ecological connection between two currently fragmented woodlands, thereby enhancing the overall ecological function. So ultimately, through this additional ecological work that has been conducted since 2023, the proposal now conforms with the OP and provincial policy. The applicant's ecologist, the LSRC, town staff, and the town's natural heritage consultant are all in agreement that the proposal before you today represents least disturbance to the natural environment and represents the best option from a natural heritage perspective. It should also be noted that the property in question is an existing lot of record with rural zoning on the, on a portion of the property. As a result, there is an as-of-right permission to construct one single-family dwelling on the property within the rural zone. The evaluation of this application, therefore, wasn't concerned with whether a house was permitted, but rather determining where, whether the proposed location meets the applicable policy and whether locating the dwelling in the proposed location or in the rural section would better, would cause less disturbance to the natural heritage system. Planning staff have concluded that the proposed location is a preferable location from this perspective, despite the need to remove some trees and amend the boundary of the environmental protection zoning. Also, just to note a few other things that have changed from a policy perspective since 2023, one being that York Region no longer has planning responsibilities and therefore didn't comment on the most recent revised proposal. Also, the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe has been repealed and replaced by the new provincial planning statement. So you'll see that the report before you doesn't speak to the growth plan and the conformity review is with the new PPS rather than the old one. Finally, the LSRC no longer has the ability to comment on natural heritage, which is why we had engaged with a peer review consultant. Also want to note that we've received several comments on the application through the public meeting as well as additional consultation that's been held with residents. They have expressed concerns regarding the application. So the recommendation before you considers all local and provincial policy and the extensive public consultation that's been conducted since 2021 and the expertise and recommendations of three separate ecologists. We believe that the revised proposal now addresses the concerns raised by residents through the public consultation process as well as those addressed in the previous recommendation from 2023. If the ZBA application is approved, the next step would be for the applicant to submit a site plan application that would allow them to carry out the technical requirements included in the natural heritage review. And it would also give us the ability to enter into a site plan agreement to ensure that those recommendations are carried out. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Members of committee, any questions? Councilor Crown, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Ms., Ms. Moore. I just want to be clear, make sure I understand this, the, the evolution of the, of your department's thoughts around this project have, have gone from opposed to now it, it conforms. And is that primarily because of the, the, the extra, the additional tree planting opportunities along with, you know, this has been going on almost three years, changes in legislation that have done that? Because I, I look at, from what you've said, York Region and LSRC no longer provide oversight. Is that, is that correct? And that's been the provincial changes? Have I got that right?
Through you, Madam Chair. So yes, that is correct. That didn't really have a major impact on the recommendations of this report, though. The LSRC always supported the application and York Region was just responsible for enforcing their official plan. Now the local planners conduct that review.
Thank you. Madam Chair, if I may, just one more follow-up, and I, I think this one's probably best directed to Mr. Carmison. In light of the, the recent tree bylaw that we adopted, is, is this, is this project covered under legacy procedures as before or does the new tree bylaw apply to this, this application? Could you help clarify that for me?
Go ahead, Mr. Carmison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Our tree compensation standards would apply. So unless they're removing trees that is in contravention to the bylaw, the, the tree compensation standards would apply.
Councilor Leahy, go ahead.
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions because this has been a long process, over more than a year, with having conversations with the residents on Manor Ridge Trail and, and addressing their concerns. And I thank the staff for all of the work that they have done to communicate with the residents and, and answer those questions. So I have two questions, if I may, Madam Chair, with regard to this. And one is with regard to the tree compensation because you did mention the, that this was the plan that had the least environmental impact, the lowest environmental impact, but it does involve removing some trees. So with the tree compensation that's being discussed, I would like further clarification because there, I'm wondering if the trees will be replaced by seedlings, which are only approximately 20 inches high, or whether they would be replaced by mature trees? And, and if you could provide any other further details about the parameters of tree replacement and tree compensation?
Ms. Moore, would you like to take that?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, I can speak to that. So they will be younger trees that will be replaced. However, the location where the proposed tree compensation is located is really where the ecological benefit is. It's two currently fragmented woodlands. So over time, as those trees grow, it will provide a new ecological connection between those woodlands, whereas the trees that are proposed to be removed are considered fringe trees. They're closer to the road and kind of at the fringe of the woodland. So although they are younger trees being planted, over time, there will be an ecological benefit.
Thank you very much. And if I may, one further question. So my concern with rezoning from environmental protected to estate residential is that it could set a precedent for future applicants who want to also see a rezoning. So my, my concern, which is I'm expressing on behalf of some of the residents of Manor Ridge Trail, is that in the future, is there any possibility that the land could be sold to a developer? And what the implications of that might be if we change the zoning on this property?
Through you, Madam Chair. So the property is located in the Greenbelt, so it really only permits one dwelling unit per property. The subdivision that exists on Manor Ridge Trail predated the Greenbelt plan, and that's why it's permitted. But under the current provincial policies, subdivisions in the Greenbelt wouldn't be permitted. And the estate residential zoning is only limited to that smaller area of the property, and the rest of the property will remain as environmental protection.
Thank you very much. So one, one very last question. And I just want it to be clear for all of council as well as for the public. So the original report that came to council back in September of 2023 was opposed. The staff was recommending that we don't proceed with it as it was at that time. And, and, but now the staff is recommending, after the peer review, et cetera, that, that we proceed and, and rezone it. And so if we were hypothetically to vote against a rezoning, then would it be possible for it to be appealed at the Ontario Land Tribunal and incur taxpayer cost for opposing it at the Ontario Land Tribunal? Is that one of the outcomes, depending on how the vote goes today?
Through you, Madam Chair. Through you, Madam Chair. That is correct. The applicant would have the right to appeal the decision to the OLT.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Leahy. Counselor Carruthers, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I was definitely against this when it first came before us because of the environmentally protected area. And now I see what's before us being a net benefit for the environment. I'm just, I'm a little bit concerned about the two-to-one tree ratio because we know planting younger trees, they don't always grow to maturity. So I'm wondering if you can, a couple of questions. Do we know the number of trees that will be removed? And what sort of guarantee is there that they will reach maturity? Is there any sort of, if they plant them and they all die, do we have any recourse? I guess is what I'm saying.
Through you, Madam Chair. I think I'll defer that to General Manager Carmasin.
Mr. Carmasin.
Through you, Madam Chair. With any tree compensation and planting, typically, the planting is monitored. And then as well, through some type of an agreement with the landowner, there wouldn't be an agreement to replace any dead or dying.
And for how long?
Through you, Madam Chair. Typically, we take a look at the growing seasons and ensure that the trees have rooted and are in good health.
So for one year? Is that?
That's correct.
Okay. And just one final question, if I may. I heard the comment that the rest of the property will remain environmental protection. Does that mean we're changing the RU to environmental protection? Or that still says stays RU? Because that's where the trees are being planted. So I just want to get some clarity on what portion is still going to be EP.
Ms. Moore.
Through you, Madam Chair. So the rural portion will remain as rural and the rest of the property will remain as EP.
So the trees are being planted on an RU portion, which means they're not going to be protected? So I'm a little uncomfortable with that. If we're taking land out of the EP area, I would rather make sure that there's like a land swap with that, that where the trees are being planted, it's going to be environmentally protected.
Ms. Bejy.
If I may, through you, Madam Mayor. By virtue of being in the green belt, they will be protected. No further development can take place in that parcel.
Would they not be more protected if they were under EP? Like, what's the difference in protection between rural and EP?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think it's a blanket protection in that there can be no further development. And they would fall under the removal, any future removal that was contemplated would fall under the tree bylaw. So I think, that's to say that I think that there's sufficient protections in place without having to redesignate the zoning.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Johns, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say for me, I'm going to be voting in favor of the staff's recommendation. And really, what it came down to me was, they have a right to build there. It's their property, they have the right to build. And I think that through the process, going back and seeing the diligence that was taken to ensure the least impactful placement within that property and the fact that it is directly on the road, like, they could have came to us and said that they wanted to build a laneway and build it down the middle of the property and build the house there, and they would have had the right to do that. And I think that this is the least impactful. It's within an existing subdivision. So if we feel that there is an impact being made, quite frankly, it's not just this house. It means that all the other houses are making an impact as well, and those houses are there. And so I was buoyed by the fact that the opportunity to connect woodlots through that tree compensation and reaching that, it's good for the area. So they have the right to build there. I see that the path was to be the least impactful on the existing ecological system. And a solution, even though they have the right to build, they're stepping forward and improving. And we just came out of a presentation regarding the climate emergency. Every step that we take and the opportunity to be better every day in our pursuits as we are growing within this housing crisis, because that's why we're building, the fact is, is that we have the opportunity to improve the environment as well, and I'm glad that this delivered on that.
Thank you, Counselor Johns. Anyone else? Seeing no further comments, I will call a vote. I've got a motion, assuming that it's as presented, Madam Mayor, moved by Mayor Haxson. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? You're in favor? I didn't see your hand, I'm sorry. Thank you. That motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Moore. The next item on our agenda is Development Services Planning Branch Report, DS 25-03, Removal of a Holding Provision on Block 182, Plan 65M-4585 and Block 245, Plan 65M-4581. And these are the removing of a holding provision in an area near Holland Vista and Meadow Vista. Ms. Bejy, did you have anything further to add to your report?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Just that the applicant, Holland Green, has confirmed they have available allocation to be able to support the construction of the 18 freehold townhomes. Happy to answer any questions that members of committee may have.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for this one, by the way? Moved by Counselor Foster. Any questions for Ms. Bejy? Seeing none, all those in favor, that motion carries. Thank you. The third item on our agenda is a Planning Branch Report, DS 2025-04, which is an extension of draft plan approval for subdivisions within the community of Sharon. And these relate to Sundial, Yorkwood, Elder Bank, and West Sharon Holdings. May I have a mover? Moved by Counselor Johns. Ms. Bejy, would you like to walk us through this one?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. This is, the applicants are seeking an extension of the draft plan approval. It has been the practice of the municipality when extensions are granted to grant for a period of three years. Certainly happy to answer any questions that members of committee may have.
I had some, but go ahead, Counselor Johns.
No, I just wanted clarity, the statement, Ms. Bejy. You just said typically, the town issues three years. Was that the request? Or is that, or are we leading that?
Through you, Madam Chair. That was the request of the applicants to have an extension of three years.
And further to that question, how many extensions have they already received?
Through you, Madam Chair. Five extensions to date.
Five extensions. It's four or five. It's a fair number. Ms. Bejy, can you, from, I know you and I had a conversation, but I'm just, for committee's education, can you walk us through the situation with allocation for this? Because they have 118 assigned, they have 172 available, and then when the Sharon inline storage solution comes online, which I understand is planned for this September, they'll have another 280 units. So they'll be able to complete this conceivably in 2025.
Through you, Madam Chair. Technically, that's correct, although there is a lot involved in the registration process, both from the applicant's side and from the staff effort side of things. So while we are conscious of wanting to support our objectives around achieving housing targets, also want to be realistic. So if it was in council's interest, for example, to consider reducing the length of the extension, that's certainly within your purview to do so, I would just suggest that anything less than 18 months, for example, might place undue pressure on staff to be able to accommodate that timeline. I can't speak to the rationale for why there have been continued extensions, other than we are aware of certain challenges within the market that influence these decisions.
And once these lots are registered, how long do they have to pull building permits in order to actually construct the homes?
Once a lot is registered, they have up to eight years, at which time, if building permits or construction is not initiated, the upper tier municipality can opt up, deem them to be deregistered.
Thank you. Counselor Carruthers.
Thank you. I'm wondering if you can help us understand what has changed in planning since 2010 as far as what we're looking at when we're looking at subdivisions now. I know that it came up during the growth workshop, that sometimes we, there's things that we have learned and there's ways that we no longer build because of what we've learned from previous plans of subdivision. So I'm just wondering, are we building a 2010 subdivision? And we're going to be building that in 2028? Because to me, that's not acceptable. We should be building homes for the future, not homes from the past. And so I'm wondering if you feel that this draft plan of subdivision is actually up to date.
Ms. Bejy.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I don't think we're prepared to comment on that at this time. We could certainly undertake a technical review and do a bit of a comparison in terms of what has changed in terms of building typologies. You know, we discussed in the growth management workshop, parking considerations, and to do a bit of a comparison, we could certainly provide that for you.
So I would like to do that before we approve this, although I see that it lapses shortly. So I'm not sure how we can go about that. But I would like, if we are going to grant an extension, it should be conditional on the plans being updated to current standards. Because when I drive through someplace like Harvest Hills and I see the lack of place to put snow, we can't continue to build like that. And some of our other subdivisions where there's lack of parking, other ones where the roads are too narrow to get emergency vehicles through, that sort of thing. So I would only vote in favor of this if it was conditional on revisiting the plan of subdivision to ensure that it's up to date.
Counselor, thank you, Counselor Carruthers. Ms. Bejy, I don't know, do we have a map of where these lots are located? Because I, my concern is less so about Counselor Carruthers' concern because these are individual areas. There are cul-de-sacs, there's roads that have already been started but can't be finished because they're orphaned lots, basically. There's fire break lots, that sort of thing. So redesigning the subdivision, I think at this point would be a challenge, given you've got, I think it's seven different builders and various different little pieces and parcels of land that need to be finished. This is about completing the village rather than starting. I'm just wondering if we have a map or something that we can show what we're talking about extending? Do we have one? Can we put it up on the screen?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Just bear with us for a moment. I believe there's an appendix attached to the report. Just bear with us for a moment.
I believe some of the road fabric is already in place, Counselor Carruthers.
And I appreciate that, especially for some of the smaller ones. But the types of homes we're building on those lots, if they're from 2010, I don't think we should be extending this.
Counselor Johns.
I haven't had the benefit of the past experiences or going through the different cycles of approving. For my term of council, I'd been sitting here, I feel that we have been speaking about the need to complete our communities. As you can see, like, within our ward in those areas, dead ends, barricades, lacking the connectivity, huge opportunity for quality of life to be exiting those areas, the walking trails in behind, like, it's going to be a gorgeous area. And when I reflect on this from a business case scenario, I can't see in my mind that these folks wouldn't want to be complete and done and exiting from there as soon as possible from a business case scenario, given the fact that the opportunity of forward and moving on to whatever is next within their business needs, it's in their best interest. And I think that, you know, we're in a downturn within the market right now, and the conditions aren't necessarily aligning. While interest rates are coming down, the fact is, is that there's uncertainty in the market, which makes people sit on the sidelines so to have more certainty. And, you know, given this, I'm fine with 36 months. The fact is, is that if a business is having a challenging time within market conditions, I don't want to be adding any further pressure. I think the opportunity to be able to give what is traditionally given through three years and give the opportunity to see where we can support further to help expedite through the planning process and do everything we can to speed up the process would be warranted to help complete the communities. And so I'm fully supportive, and anything we can do to clear any further bottlenecks, I would be open to hearing be presented and see what we can do from a planning perspective to speed up the process. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am, I'm really looking at this from both sides and trying to wrap my head around it. And I agree with what Counselor Johns is saying. You know, we, you know, we just, at the beginning of this meeting, we had a conversation about supporting Canadian business. And, you know, these folks are looking for some support. And so I think we need to be mindful of that. But this thing was approved back, you know, we had a different mayor back when it was approved. It was quite, I think, the existing mayor is the only member of council from that day. So a lot of time has passed. And so, you know, 2016, 2017, we issued more building permits than we ever did in our history. Why did they not, what was wrong with the market then? And I'm trying to, I'm trying to look at this from both sides to find a way forward, but I'm just really understanding why, you know, when the market was hot, they didn't strike. If anyone has any insight to that, I would love to hear it.
From my perspective, I mean, I lived this. And Counselor Crone, it's my understanding that they did not have the allocation to complete the community at the time. And so the reality is, though, that they will have it. That's why they were given so many extensions, was because we were waiting for YDSS. But what we've heard today as well is that even if it's registered, they still have eight years for permits to be pulled. So from that perspective, whether we give them 18 months or three years, we're still giving them an extension. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. That's good context to have. I'm not opposed to an extension, but I would throw a caveat onto it that this is the last one. And this time, we mean it. Thank you.
So, members of committee, I have a motion as presented from Counselor Johns. I have Counselor Carruthers, who's concerned and would like to have it conditional on a review. I have Counselor Crone, who has suggested a stamped at Noah Racy's, that's the last one. Per-
one. Personally, my position would be an extension of 18 months and no longer. I sat here when this group came to us and said, we need allocation and so we're going to get creative and we're going to propose the Sharon inline storage solution, and then sat for years and didn't actually build it. And then this group also was involved in wanting to have access to the allocation we had in reserve, which was granted to them, and because it was so urgent that they finish, which we would like to see them finish, and yet we're being asked for a three-year extension. I can't support it. I can support 18 months, but I cannot support three years. Counselor Carruthers, go ahead.
So what happens if we said no today? Or if in 18 months, we don't renew, or even three years? If at some point, we say, no more extension? What happens then?
Ms. Bajie.
Through you, Madam Chair. Essentially, the process resets and they have to initiate the application process again.
Okay, so I wouldn't want to have to put them through that, but I am very cognizant on these being very old designs. I understand that a lot of the community, it's, you know, a little bit of infill here and there. You don't want to be totally different from the neighboring house. But with some of these larger areas, I really would like us to take a technical look at it and make recommendations to them if we do want to bring the plans more up to date. And I'm just wondering, what is the best way to do that? I don't know if we can defer this and have it come back to us for our next meeting. I don't want to add more work, but what would be the best way to do that? Perhaps our CEO can chime in on that.
Someone from staff, would you like to?
Madam Chair, it really depends on timing. Like I would ask the planner if, like what time do we have to work with before we're at a point where this expires and the process starts again?
Ms. Moore. I think your reports gives us the deadline.
Yeah. Through you, Madam Chair. The draft approval does lapse in April, so if we don't have a council resolution by then, then they're back to the beginning.
Go ahead, Mr. Vlachic.
So, Madam Chair, I just wanted to confirm that, just for the public record, so that, in fact, it's my understanding then that we could come back in the month of March with some additional information, if that's helpful to you, and we'd be in advance of that sort of, you might call it, critical date.
Counselor Johns, this is your motion. What would you like to do with it? I can call the vote as presented, or?
I'm just wondering if there's any other counselors that were looking to speak on the topic?
Back to you in the hot seat. Oh, you would like to speak? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Leahy, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. I would like to say that it's important at a high level to remember that we're working with stakeholders in the community, and it's important to have a good, positive working relationship. So I think that at every opportunity or challenge that we face, and both parties have been waiting for different reasons, that we take that into consideration and give benefit of the doubt to the developers, that if we grant them one further extension, that they will work within that three-year period to start building houses.
Counselor Carruthers.
Thank you. In my mind, we've been waiting for 15 years, to wait another month to make sure that council completely understands the type of homes that they're building, if we have any leeway in making sure they're to a more modern standard. I think the extra month, we have the time, I don't think it should be putting the builder out at all. And I think it's about doing our due diligence. They've put this off for 15 years. I think they can wait another month.
Mr. Vlachic.
Madam Chair, yeah, the deadline date, as Ms. Moore said, is into April, so we have time. There's nothing lapsing until that point in time. And perhaps in the month of March, rather than staff speaking on behalf of the developer, we have the developer, we arrange with them to come in and do a little bit of a presentation to council on what their plans are, and you can ask them your questions directly, and we can sort of get a sense of what they might be able to do to give you any either assurances or a sense of what they can and would be prepared to do to try and modernize as appropriate their stock. So that's something we could easily set up, and it might be a little bit more helpful than staff trying to answer on their behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Vlachic. Counselor Johns.
I'm going to withdraw my motion to approve.
So we have a motion that's been withdrawn. Would someone like to put forward a motion? Counselor Carruthers.
I'd like to move that this item be deferred to our, to a March meeting and that staff work with the developer to make a presentation to us, to full council on that.
We've heard the intent of the motion. Madam Clerk, you've captured that. So that's moved by Counselor Carruthers. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Counselor Foster.
So I know that we've had developments that were delayed for one reason or another before, and I'm thinking of one where we actually were successful with going back to the developer and getting some changes to make it a little bit better. And I also know that once the development is approved, we kind of don't have a lot to say. Is there any mechanism anywhere that allows us to actually go back and not just say, we really want you to help us out here, but is there a mechanism that we can go back and say, you know, your plans are 15 years old and this is why we want to look at it and these are the things that we might be looking at? Or is it all just kind of dependent on the developer wanting to work with us?
Ms. Bajie. I know I had that same question when we talked about Queensville back in 15 years ago.
Through you, Madam Chair. Legislatively, no, we don't, once it has received draft approval, other than, you know, going back to the drawing board, which I don't think would serve anyone's interest, especially noting that this is infill and there are existing road networks and existing building typologies. However, I do think it's, it would be valuable to have the conversation to explore what's possible.
Counselor Crone.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I understand the process, if we say no, the process resets, does it not? And then we can have those conversations if we want. We kind of force it that way. Not that I would want to do it, but it's kind of a, you know, we're holding a bit of a stick there, so.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure if you want to answer or not.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I guess technically, that is correct, however, I'm not sure that's the best way forward or the best use of staff resources or taxpayer dollars.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table from Counselor Carruthers. We've heard the intent of the motion. Any further discussion? Counselor Johns.
I just want to clarify, I'm going to be voting no, because I believe we should be approving today. So I just wanted to clarify what my vote will mean when I vote no.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? And that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a memorandum regarding a site plan, control application for the southwest corner of Croonson Kingway and Dogwood Boulevard. And what this doesn't say is that the word "school," which is exciting and it's good news. Ms. Bajie, before I turn the microphone over to Ms. Bajie, may I have a mover for receipt? Counselor Leahy. All right, Ms. Bajie, did you have anything further to add or just introducing this one for us?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Nothing further this time. It's an introductory memo to make council aware of that the application has been received and deemed complete. However, we do have planning staff in the room, should members of committee have any specific technical questions.
Members of committee, any questions? Seeing none, I have a motion moved by Counselor Leahy that received this memorandum. All those in favor? And that motion carries. Thank you. The fifth item on our agenda is a memorandum regarding a proposed amendment to a draft plan, to a draft approved plan of subdivision for 18508 Leslie Street. May I have a mover? This is just for receipt. Moved by Counselor Crone. Ms. Bajie, anything to add?
Through you, Madam Chair. This is the same as the previous. This is an introductory memo, just to advise council that the application has been received. But certainly, again, have planning staff in the room if there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Crone, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate, this is just sort of an introductory. Have members of leadership team had an opportunity to review this?
Ms. Bajie.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure I understand the question, in terms of circulation.
Has this been circulated? Yes.
Yeah, I can ask the planner to sort of give you an update on the circulation to date. It's our senior planner, Matt Doh.
Go ahead, Mr. Doh.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, the application has been circulated internally and externally for review upon drafting the report.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Through you, Madam Chair. It's a dense, it's a dense application, and I understand this is just introductory, but because it's fresh in our head, certainly in my head, with all the snow we've had, I'm concerned about the space here. And I would ask Mr. Molinari, initially, if you have any concerns with this, given some of the challenges we've had in the last week with snow removal.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'd have to look at that in detail. I would suspect as part of the process, we'll go through that and we'll ensure that it meets the whatever standards that we require.
My questions are probably premature, so I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Perhaps we can just clarify, this is more of an administrative matter than a substantive matter, correct? It's simply that this parcel of land was not included in the draft plan of subdivision in the paperwork. So we're really just, we're adding it in after the fact.
That's correct. This is more of an administrative correction, if you will, than it is consideration of an entirely new application.
Thank you. And we're still waiting for updated architectural design and all of that sort of stuff on this particular application.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you. And I should add that the house is completely boarded up with plywood in front on the windows at this time. So time is also of the essence. All right, so we have a motion from Counselor Crone that we receive, the memorandum. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that motion carries. Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of our prepared agenda. Ms. Bajie, did you have anything further to add at this time?
Nothing further this time, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of committee, I'm going to turn the chair back to Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're at item L, and that's Legislative Services with myself in the chair. We do not have anything at this time under item L. Item M is Following Engineering and Public Works with Counselor A.K.
Madam Mayor.
In the chair.
Pardon me, may I interrupt? It's just been indicated to me by General Manager Molinari that he does indeed have an item of business that he'd like to discuss today.
I will turn it over to you, and you can work with him for that.
Thank you very much to you, Madam Mayor, and to the committee. General Manager Molinari, do you have an item of importance that you'd like to discuss today?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just thought with the major storm event we just had, first off, really appreciate the feedback from council and from CEO Vlachic. I know our staff have been working very hard, not just in EPW, but also PRC and others. And I think a little, that those sentiments are, would be very well, are being very well received by staff. So thank you for that. But I also thought I'd share with you a little bit around this past storm, because it's top of mind and you might find it of interest. We received approximately 70 centimeters of snow. Typically, we receive one major 20-centimeter storm per year. We had two of those within four days, plus an additional 10-centimeter storm in the middle. We have about 485 lane kilometers of roads, 10 routes. And through this process, we plowed second, seven consecutive days with a total lane kilometers of about 4,500 kilometers. So just for context, that's the same as us driving from Sharon to Newfoundland and back, or one long drive from Sharon to Vancouver. So that puts a little bit of perspective on the scale of the operation we just had. In terms of cost, I won't give you the full cost value, but I will say that this storm used 50% of the total salt that we used last season. So it was significant. We hope to not see too many of these in the future, but our staff were there and got the job done this time. So I just wanted to leave you with those thoughts.
Thank you so much, General Manager Molinari. So can I have a mover to receive this? Thank you very much, Counselor Roy DiClemente. And are there any further questions for General Manager Molinari? Yes, Counselor Carruthers.
Can you just give me that number again of the total amount of snow? Seventy?
Seventy centimeters.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So if there are no further questions, thank you very much. And again, we appreciate all of the efforts, and you are so responsive, as I myself know, as I was fielding questions from the public about fire hydrants and sidewalks, et cetera. It was very welcome that the staff is always immediately available and responsive throughout that snowmageddon that we were experiencing. So if I see no further questions, can I take a vote to receive the comments made by General Manager Molinari? All those in favor? Very good, and that is passed. And so I will pass the chair back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're under item N, and that's Fire and Emergency Services with Counselor Foster in the chair.
And nothing prepared, chief main prize, anything further? I'll send it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item O is Other Business, and today we have Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority Update Memo provided by Counselor Roy DiClemente.
Madam Mayor, just an update from myself as representative on the Conservation Authority Board, just to bring members of council committee up to speed on sort of highlights of the past several months on the LS RCA. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions. Counselor Carruthers, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I'm happy to move receipt of this, and I just wanted to thank Counselor Roy DiClemente for taking the time to put this together, not only just going to the meetings, but also taking the time to inform us of what's going on. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
All those in favor? And that's carried.
Thank you. I'm at item P, and that is adjournment. May it resolve at the meeting of the committee of the whole council adjourned at 3:38 PM. All those in favor? Oh, I didn't have a move. Counselor Carruthers, go ahead. All those in favor? And that's carried. I would expect perhaps at this time that others might want a 10-minute break before the meeting of special counsel. So I will ask for that at this point.